Oh, please.
Yes, good evening. Gina Argento. Baden Bakawaski.
Yeah.
Lisa Bermante. Gina Barrows. Gina? Gina?
Here.
Okay. Eric Wuzaitis. Eric? Iris Cabrera. Phil Capernegro. Frank Cabon.
Here.
Steven Chesler.
Yeah.
Michael Chincelli. Chincelli, Michael? Teresa Sinziato. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni Diamaro. Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibunaski.
Here.
Here.
Lloyd Fing.
Fing.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Amanda Foster.
The Alice Fuller.
The Alice Fuller.
Yeah.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia.
Joe Goldstein.
Joe Goldstein.
Joe Gross.
Joe Gross.
Yeah. Yeah.
David Helmick.
David Helmick.
Yes, here.
Yes, here.
It's a joke.
Robert Jeffrey. Bonzina Kaminsky.
Kaminsky.
I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory Canton.
Cory Canton.
Paul Kultevorn.
Paul Kultevorn.
I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
William Gladwell.
Gladwell.
Yo Landl.
Yo Landl.
Marie Liaison.
Liaison.
Marie?
Marie?
Here. I'm here. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm getting a very bad echo, people.
Very bad echo, people.
Yolo.
Yolo.
Trina McKeever.
Trina McKeever.
Here.
Adam Myers.
Adam Myers.
Dante Machelli.
Dante Machelli.
Present.
Present.
Okay. Toby Moskowitz.
Toby Moskowitz.
Rabbi David Needleman.
Rabbi David Needleman.
Karen Yeves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Karen? Okay. Thank you. Mary Odomerick.
Mary Odomerick.
I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Pearson.
Dennis Pearson.
Bella Sables.
Bella Sables.
And Toby Moskowitz. And Toby Moskowitz. Toby Moskowitz. Here. Toby Moskowitz. Here.
Okay. Bella Sable?
Bella Sable.
Isaac Sofer?
Isaac Sofer.
Del T?
Here. 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 Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
William Vega?
William Vega?
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Mofy Gabiera?
Mofy Gabiera.
Simon Weiser.
Simon Weiser.
Sorry, I wasn't here before.
Sorry, I wasn't here before he's here. Any more with his hair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonia Phil Capernegro.
Phil Capernegro.
Got you.
Got you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
We have twenty members present who answered the call.
Who answered the call.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia.
This is Adam Myers. I just joined.
I just joined.
I'm hearing an echo. I'm hearing an echo. Send me to your end. Send me to your end.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That was Mr. Adam Myers.
Mr. Adam Myers.
Could members who are not speaking mute themselves so maybe that'll reduce the echoing?
We got a lot of background noise going on. Maybe somebody's on two devices. Let me ask everybody to mute themselves that's not speaking, please.
Yeah, because I was losing my mind, people. Okay, we have twenty-one.
Thank you. Getting our public hearing.
It's Eric. I'm here. I just could get on.
Thank you, Eric. Now, I'm new with this, guys. Do I have to do a new time roll call or just check people off even though I put it at six oh five when I finished? How do I do it?
What?
When I finish the roll call and I pronounce how many people are present and I do the time that I called it, do I start a second line or do I just put them in with the first roll call?
No, just as they put, as they, as they come in while you're still calling the roll call, they probably couldn't get in. So just put them in.
Okay, thank you.
First item on the agenda, New York's Design and Construction withdrew their presentation for tonight. The next item on the agenda is the combined public hearing calendar for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. Is there a discussion on that on the calendar? Any changes?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, just November date. It says Wednesday, eleven fourteen, I believe is a Tuesday. So I don't know if it was meant to be on Tuesday or on that.
It's probably a holiday if it's on Wednesday.
Yeah, but Wednesday is the, I believe, the fifteenth.
Is it the fifteenth? November twenty twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we have to get a twenty twenty-three calendar and, have one handy. Thank you. When we go into our, when we go into, when we go into our board meeting, we'll vote on it and we'll make the changes. If anybody has a twenty-three, twenty twenty-three calendar, please try to check that date so we can be accurate. But if there's any other issue.
Yes, I'm checking.
Hmm?
So November fourteenth is a Tuesday for twenty twenty-three. But I don't, I don't think it's a holiday. Anybody say, think it's a holiday?
Well, like I say, you know, we, we consulted with our city community because they have, they have holidays and calendar. We went over the calendar. If it's not on a Tuesday, then it's maybe, it's a holiday.
But it is, um, okay, so we have what?
It's probably a Jewish holiday.
Okay.
As we checked, we checked on this more than one time.
No, no. The date, the date is fine. The, the actual date, it's the day of the week. It should be Tuesday as opposed to Wednesday.
I'm saying it's private.
November fourteen falls on a Tuesday, not a Wednesday. That's what Steve was saying. And twenty twenty-three, the actual date of November fourteen is a Tuesday, not a Wednesday. And our paper indicates Wednesday, but that day is a Tuesday.
Okay, maybe it's a topic, a topical error.
Okay, November fourteenth is not a Jewish holiday.
Okay, thank you, but it's definitely a Tuesday.
Definitely a Tuesday.
Sonia, Sonia, October eleventh, October eleventh.
What was that?
Again, again.
I see October. I see October eleventh. There's Wednesday. Is that a Wednesday or a Tuesday?
October eleventh is a Wednesday. But was it because it's their holiday in October, guys?
Apparently.
Okay, so October eleven.
Is okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's definitely a Wednesday.
Okay.
But November fourteenth is a Tuesday.
All right.
So we just have to, do we pencil it in, guys? Do we? Can pencil it in?
Yeah. I corrected it.
Okay, if that's the case, we'll have to change it and resend it out to everybody. Correct, uh, date. Okay, is there any other discussion on it? Okay, we'll vote on, when we go into our board meeting, we'll vote on the calendar. Okay? Okay, uh, next, liquor license. Is there any speakers on liquor license?
Yes, Raheka. Hello?
Hi.
Are you unmuted?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, yeah. Hi, Madam Chair. This is Radeka. My boyfriend, Karn, and I recently moved to Williamsburg, Brooklyn. We live on North Twelfth Street, right next to the Coda Hotel, which was formerly known as the McCarran Hotel and Park. We've been deeply affected by the strong bass from their rooftop bar that plays. They have performances from DJs that goes on until four AM. So both of us are not able to sleep ever since we moved this summer. We've been sleeping in the kitchen because the bass is reverberating through the walls of our home. We've gone to the hotel. We've communicated just that we're not able to sleep and they don't seem to care as much. And even we've had DEP fines, even after that, the noise just keeps, keeps getting worse and we kind of feel helpless. And even after escalating it at many points, it's affecting our health situation where we're just purely not able to sleep. And wanted to kind of convey to see what actions we can take against the rooftop bar at Coda, Coda Hotel.
Have you made three-one-one complaints?
Yes, we've made, uh, the last time our property manager looked, there was over forty-nine three-one-one complaints against this hotel. So it's our condo, which is adjacent to the wall of the hotel, where we feel a little bit more affected, but a lot of our community members in our condo are also affected. So every weekend, we're making diligent three-one-one complaints and there just doesn't seem any, any solution towards that. And we're, we're just not able to sleep on most of the weekends when they play music until five AM.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Samir.
Hey, everybody. Um, I just wanted to start by, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, let me just go to my notes real quick. Um, so, uh, dear esteemed members of the community board, my name is Samir Taladi and I reside at one thirty-five North Eleventh Street. And I'm here as a board president of the residences at the Williamsburg. Last month, I had an opportunity to present at the SLA Subcommittee meeting. And during this time, I made them, made the team aware of several issues regarding our neighbors located at one sixty North Twelfth Street, as, as Radeka just pointed out, Coda Hotel, formerly known as the McCarran Park Hotel. So tonight, I want to be succinct and I want to surface the issues we are having. Um, issue one are the noise complaints. The volume of three-one-one, uh, calls regarding this venue, since July first, and I'm going to quantify this for you all, since July first to August fifth, there have been forty-five three-one-one complaints, more or less, have been made and it was hard to print it out. I have all of this, all these calls, uh, printed out and all these violations printed out that I'm more than happy to, provide to you all if needed. But out of those forty-five three-one-one complaints, eighteen of those calls have led to the police department taking action to fix this condition. That is approximately forty percent of the time. Um, this number would much, if the security guards didn't radio to the rooftop to lower the music as they saw police enter. Uh, and as Radeka had pointed out, the DEP on Friday, September ninth, in joint effort with Sergeant Frank Gatos, scheduled a hearing at around eleven PM and noticed levels significantly above city ordinances. Uh, the noise pollution is and has been an issue. The noise continues and will continue this weekend. Uh, based on their advertisement on social media, they are planning three events on their roof uh, or basement, uh, which is a new location for their nightclub. And let me just be clear on, on issue number two now. Um, the establishment on the roof is called Creatures of All Kind. Uh, the basement venue is called Bohemia. Um, this is outside of what is on their CFO. And let me just be further clear here. This is a nightclub as per zoning text. Uh, first and foremost, the hotel is located within an M one dash M two slash RX, R six A uh, and MX dash eight zoning district. The hotel is not the issue here. It's the nightclub. Our issue is that their CFO states that the use group is five for a rooftop bar. Hotels are allowed to have the following as of right accessory use. Permitted accessory use includes restaurants, cocktail lounges, public banquet halls, ballrooms, or meeting rooms. These permitted accessory uses do not mention nightclub and there is a distinction, a major one. If we look at use group ten, which states without restriction on entertainment for dancing, but limited to location in hotels. That is vastly different. Um, this does not fit within zoning and use as permitted by city on the CFO. Use group five, for which they have a permitted CFO, entails a rooftop bar. And again, I'd be more than happy to forward this to you, uh, Chairperson Fuller, if, if need be. Uh, again, this is a transient hotel and such, the accessory uses do not allow for the current. We don't, our objective is not to shut down the hotel, their venues, just operate under the current ordinances. So to sum up here, our ask is that as a quasi judiciary body that you all are, we hope that you will take into consideration the numerous noise violations from three-one-one calls, the DEP reading and our advocacy, and that you will seek not to renew your liquor license as that license is due upon one thirty-one until, until they are acting within the standards of the city and within the character of the community that we have. Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
That is it on liquor licenses for speakers.
Thank you, Joanna. That concludes our public hearing session. Now we're going to our board meeting. Can I have the roll, uh, moment of silence?
Moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please, Sonia?
Yes, ma'am. Gina Argento. Baden Bakawaski.
Yeah.
Lisa Bermante. Gina Barrows.
Yeah.
Eric Wuzaitis.
Here.
Iris Cabrera. Iris Cabrera. Phil Capernegro.
Yeah.
Frank Cabon.
Here.
Steven Chesler.
Yeah.
Michael Chincelli. Teresa Sinziato.
Sinziato.
Stephanie Cuevas.
Stephanie Cuevas.
Ronan Daly.
Ronan Daly.
Giovanni Diamaro.
Giovanni Diamaro.
Erin Drinkwater.
Erin Drinkwater.
Arthur Dibunaski.
Arthur Dibunaski.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Lloyd Fing.
Lloyd Fing.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Gross, could you mute yourself?
Please, thank you. Cristo Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross.
Joe Gross.
David Helmick.
Here.
Sabrina Hill. Kenny Denny Horowitz.
I'm here.
Thank you. Moses Ending. Robert Jeffrey. Bonzina Kaminsky.
Here.
Thank you. Cory Canton.
Here.
Thank you. Paul Kultevorn.
Here.
Thank you. William Gladwell.
Here.
Thank you. Yo Landl. Marie Liaison. Marie?
Yes, here.
Yolo. Trina McKeever. Trina McKeever.
Here.
Sorry. Adam Myers.
Here.
Dante Machelli.
Here.
Toby Moskowitz.
Here.
Thank you. Rabbi David Needleman. Karen Yeves.
Here.
Mary Odomerick.
I'm here.
Thank you. Dennis Pearson. Dennis Pearson. I hear you.
Here.
Thank you. Bella Sable. Isaac Sofer. Del T.
Here.
William Vega.
He got in the house.
Uh-oh. Maria Vieira. Maria Vieira? Simon Weiser. Twenty-six members answer the call. It's enough for the call.
Thank you, Sonia. Can I approve a motion to approve the agenda?
Hello?
Hello?
This is our chair.
John Gross.
This is our chair. I'm here for the meeting.
I'm here for the meeting.
Gina, I'm sorry. Okay.
Gina, I got you. Okay, Gina, got you.
Apologize. It took a while.
Apologize. It took a while.
Mr. Gross, would you mute yourself?
Okay, Gina, I got you. Anybody else? Is Iris there? Because I didn't, Iris didn't answer the call. I saw her. Uh-oh.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I make a motion. Bonzina Kaminsky.
Phil Capernegro seconds.
Yeah.
Bonzina Kaminsky and William Vega, all in favor? No, it was, it was, it was, um, it was.
I heard Vega first.
Bonzina, no, Bonzina and Phil.
Huh?
Bonzina and Phil Capernegro.
It was Boz, it was Bonzina and William Vega.
Sonia. Sonia. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Extinctions? Motion carried. Can I have an emotion, a motion to approve the minutes?
Joe Gross.
Is there a second?
William Vega seconds.
Joe Gross and William Vega, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That don't sound like twenty-six ayes. Against? Extinctions? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, public session, can we have the speakers for the public session, please, Joanna?
Adela, Adela Alonso. Not present. Heidi Gomez. Not present. Ms. Cameron Williams. And Ms. McLaurin. Not present. Benjamin Ingerman. Benjamin? You're muted. Benjamin? Hello, Benjamin? Next speaker is Rolfe Carl. Not present. Next speaker is Teresa Toro. Not present. David Nash. David, you're muted.
Yep, I'm here. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I just noticed that all the, a lot of the hosts, I think, muted everyone. So I was unable to mute until just now. So I'm not sure if anyone else had the same issue, but.
Got two minutes.
Oh, am I speaking right now?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't know the format. Sorry. So I'm basically just, um, wanted to speak on behalf of a variance permit that I've been applying for. Um, we're doing some renovations on my house, looking to finish up in the next few weeks, honestly, hoping to finish by December uh, before the weather gets cold. And all of the outside work is done, meaning from a noise perspective, there's no drilling, hammering, sawing, anything going on on the outside of the house. Um, primarily looking to do, um, you know, drywall work, some light carpentry on the inside of the house. Um, but still hoping to go, you know, to apply for the Saturday variance, which we have received in the past. Um, just haven't been able to acquire them over the past month or so. Um, and we have written to, um, Ms. Teague at the Land Use Committee also to plead our case. Um, also worth noting that our neighbors, just two doors down from us, um, seem to continually get them approved every Saturday where ours are denied. So we're just kind of a little bit unsure why that is. Um, and hoping to appeal to the board to, uh, see if we could potentially get a, a letter that would allow us to get Saturday permits just for the next three or four weeks. That was, that's my case, essentially. Happy to answer any questions as well, if anyone from the board has any for us.
There's no questions during this period.
Oh, okay.
The next speaker is Ryan Coonan. Ryan? Ryan's not present. And that is, that's it for speakers.
Thank you, Joanna. Next, we have, uh, committee reports. Landmarks.
Okay, hi, it's Trina. And I'm wondering if Rolfe, Rolfe Carl is in the room, if, if we could make sure he's, see if he's here because he was speaking. He spoke at our committee meeting and I know he was coming to speak to the full board. I'm wondering if we could give it another shot to see.
She said he wasn't here.
Yeah, I don't, uh, Trina, I don't see his name listed here at all.
Okay.
I'm going through the list and I don't see him at all.
Okay, so I will go ahead with the committee reports. What, the property that, um, that we discussed is the property that presented to the full board at our, um, at the October meeting. It's one forty-four Greenpoint Avenue, which is a building that is, um, on the, on the footprint of the old Polynice, of the Polynice Theater at the corner on Greenpoint Avenue, right at Manhattan. And what, what the presenter explained to us at the last month's meeting, again, at the committee meeting, was they are going to keep the, the retaining walls of the Polynice and keep the basic, the basic walls and replace, rebuild the building with a, the Polynice right now is a two-story building and a one-story building. It's two buildings put together. And on that property, they would like to build, they, they're proposing to build a three-story building with a penthouse that will be a fully commercial building. And I think I don't need to go into the details because we all saw a very extensive presentation last month, which was repeated at our committee. And what the, the crux of what, um, I think there were committee members that, 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 that saw great benefit in the, in the building, but there were a number of committee members, there were committee members and community members. Rolfe Carl being the, the main community member that spoke, who spoke against the, the proposed height. And the, the issue that they saw was that the two-story building, that the, the height of the Polynice should be the height that should be, um, maintained. Because to build a three-story building would, um, would go against the character of the neighbor, character of the historic district and also would block the views from Greenpoint Avenue of the historic churches. of the historic churches behind, behind the, of St. Anthony's, as well as St. John's Lutheran on, on Milton Street. Um, there were also issues that came up specifically about the building having to do with the, the ceiling heights on the upper floors, which are fourteen feet, which seemed excessive. There was discussion about the, the canopy that, that sticks out over the doorway, and the fact that it's, I think it's eight feet, it's, it's, it's excessive for, in the district, and also the signage that was proposed. And after a lot of back and forth about the potential impacts of the size of the building, as well as the details, um, of the building itself, I'll read you the resolution that the committee ended up coming to. Okay, and here it is. Noting the one and two-story heights of the original and subsequent buildings at one forty-four Greenpoint Avenue, and how the structures of this mass and bulk harmoniously enhance the district, allowing views from Greenpoint Avenue of iconic bell towers, um, on Manhattan Avenue, St. Anthony's, and Milton Street, St. John's Lutheran, as well as function to contextualize the historic bank building at one forty Greenpoint Avenue. Weighing these strong concerns against the, the project presented. After much deliberation, the committee recommends that the full board vote in favor of the certificate of appropriate, appropriateness for the new design for one forty-four Greenpoint Avenue with the following reservations. With consideration to the existing purpose-built, um, commercial structures in the Greenpoint Historic District, we ask for an upgrading of material as well as design for, for them, for a building less generic than what is presented. We ask that the ceiling heights on the third floor and penthouse be reduced from fourteen feet to a more reasonable height. We ask for canopies, especially, um, over the front entrance and signage to be reduced in size. And we ask for consideration of a redesign of the cornice, that it be, that the volume of the cornice be, um, be broken. That, that is the resolution that was voted on, and there were thirteen yes votes and one no vote.
Can I add a comment, a few comments, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm, clearly, I'm the only one that voted no. Um, and I'd love to add, I, I respect if the, the committee, uh, decided their way, but I continue to have a concern of the dynamic. I believe that something corrupted on the process. And, and I, I believe the committee didn't receive the point of Rolfe Carl. I believe it was questioned, even the attendability that Rolfe Carl was presenting, uh, the Milton Street Block Association, everybody has been knowing for years, you know, thirty-five years old resident that has been a community activist, and, and many of the committee members know. There was even a question if there was a petition from the block association, which I'm also part of the block association. There was even an allusion that if that presentation from Rolfe Carl was mine, because it needs to be known, when actually it wasn't mine, you know, I didn't have the time to do that. Rolfe Carl stepped in, and he's been in contact with the resident, at, at least with the most affected, uh, resident there. And what has come out, then he's tried to point it out, and I don't think he was maybe legal, but definitely he wasn't very ethical, that the presentation, as frequently happened from developer, it was misleading. And this misrepresent, really, the project, misrepresent the view, the angle, there were points of abstraction of the tower bell, of several churches, uh, you know, and, 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 and I believe that wasn't really regarded. I also, myself, I pointed out that the nineteen forties and the thirties, uh, tax block picture, actually, the nineteen forty tax block picture, which this one document should not be cropped out, is what state the, the, uh, dead building, and how the building was, uh, recorded as a landmark, the picture were cropped out. I believe there's something misleading in the presentation. I assume it was cropped out because a comparison with the historic bank building next to it to a one-story building. The building is composed of two buildings, one very small in scale, would have triggered definitely a comparison with a little historic bank building. And it was not heard at all. I understand, I don't know for what reason, but there is a community there, and, and we need to use tools. I understand this is a landmark, but we don't have to vote in favor and create the precedent for the next developer to come in sometime, you know, and I'm not, I was, kind of pointed out that I was a purist, I'm actually, I'm a contemporary designer. I will welcome something modern. I also question, only question the massing and the scale. And maybe not of the entire building, but one that could have, have an impact on the image of that, uh, bank building. And something else was, uh, wasn't reported probably, but I didn't want to, uh, argue on the minute. I pointed out a, a larger community issue, which is the opening of three terraces. And we just heard, uh, people talking about terraces, operating with bar on rooftop, and, and those are major community issue, but allowing something historically didn't happen there to have a development, enlarging the scale, and at that point, the moment you enlarge the scale, zoning as of right or not, when you're not in a landmark historic district. That's why they were there. You could open three terraces, they could become bar, open it up like on a canyon, like on a eco boxes, eco chamber to, uh, potentially, and for sure, that will happen, have a tremendous impact on the quality of life of the neighbors, of which they are exhausted. They don't want to even come anymore to any meeting, because they know, it's very well-known, the committee board doesn't respond to this. And I try to voice out with my accent, but I believe, you know, I, I'm.
Dante, can I interrupt you? There was a lot of discussion about the scale of the building at the committee report, and had nothing to do with your accident. And I think Rolfe, Rolfe's presentation was, was really looked at by committee members and understood. There were different, there, what the, what the developer had done, there was a front-on view of the Polynese, and then the comparison of what the project would look like was from the side. And from the side, if you were to take a fro, side view of the Polynese, you saw the church towers. I think that was, and so, thereby proving that the, the development will block the view of the church towers. I think the committee members understood that, and still, still thought that the points made in the resolution, that, that it seemed as if a four-story building or a three-story building with a penthouse that's set back, people weren't, people were okay with it on the committee. And so it's not that you were misunderstood, I think you were very understood and very listened to, and there was extensive hour-long discussion about the scale of the building.
I, I understand that, Trina, but I believe it's something that I keep hearing, because when Rolfe Carl is questioned, when I'm questioned the most, if there is a petition, or which I text nothing, to put a petition in place from a block association, which we've been historically involved, and, you know, we don't need to arrive to that extreme, I believe it's kind of, uh, uh, a little bit awkward that that happened that night, especially that night, especially to Rolfe Carl. But I believe when committee members, they don't live there, they don't reside there, and there is potential to something tremendously, have a tremendous impact on the quality of life, the committee should back up.
Something, something. The landmarks committee is not interested in discussing.
But you see, that's, I understand that, but we are here to discuss issue about community. We should, we don't have tools, we said, oh, that's city planning, we should use the tool that we have. And I believe, why we feel, let me finish, Trina, please, please. Let me, let me finish the point, I'm, I'm not arguing, the vote has been what it is, but I, I need to express, because we're gonna, later, we're gonna have the, resent the consequence of this. Why a, a committee cannot work on, uh, and trying to push a developer to stay on a smaller scale? There were argument to keep the building on a smaller scale. And, and why do we want to create the foundation to invite the next developer? A statement was made there, that there were many smaller buildings, they were looking forward to be expanded. That's what the architect said all around. I don't think it's fair, and the comparison we brought, including the Caliar Street development next to the bank, I point, because I know that project very well, I said that they didn't expand, the point of reference was the dome of the bank. Didn't expand the night, higher than that. This one expanded the night, they use, that one of the building they compare was Caliar Street, or other taller building. This is a matter of vision, and I understand that there is another architect can give input, but honestly, I believe there is other way of using that, and it doesn't mean to be purist. Purist, somebody want to replicate exactly that building, but the scale can have other impact on a community. And as a community, uh, board, we should use the tool that we have. We don't have many tools, the city planning, we don't have any tools.
Dante, there were people, there were a number of people on the committee who didn't have a problem with the scale.
Yes, and they, and they don't live there, they're not going to be impacted, and, and, and that's it. And the only advantage that they had is that the community is exhausted. They don't have the energy to come and to attend and complain, their family, you know, and, and it's a big burden.
Okay, 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 Dante, please summarize.
I just want to, I just want to.
Dante, Dante, calm down.
Okay.
Please summarize, in case, you know, if anybody else got anything to say. Maybe somebody else got some question. So please summarize your point.
Ma, Madam Chair, can I make a motion to accept the committee, uh, report and approve this project as it was presented by the, the Trina? This is Bozina Kaminsky. We have talked, uh, to the very land about this project, everybody had the time to speak. And, um, uh, I, I think the, this time is exhausted, and, and we have to move, move on.
William Vega seconds.
I would, yeah, I would.
Thank you, Commissioner, but I think other people have, uh, I think other people have some comments before we do the motion. And I think, uh, people just want the full board to understand the concept of what's going on here. I, I think Vega asked to speak, right?
No, it's a second, uh, you, you want to hold off, so.
Oh, okay, go ahead, um. Go ahead, Katie.
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, we, we've had this conversation before about decorum and, and not, um, um, disregarding committees', um, experience, um, after they voted. Um, we've received apologies when there are similar outbursts, so I just wanted to remind the, the members of that.
Thank you, Katie.
Are you saying that, that this is, is not challenging any, anything, it's just challenging a project, Katie? You know, there is no about decorum, I'm not.
Dante, Dante, you said that some of the members didn't live there, so didn't deserve to have an opinion.
Okay, okay, guys, let's move on, I see this is not going to get.
Mischaracterizing what I said, but again.
Dante, please. Is there any more, uh, comments on this, uh?
Madam Chair, Steve and Justin. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just, you know, I, I want to acknowledge the, uh, you know, the work that Rolfe Carl, he did an extensive kind of photo expose, he detailed, took detailed photographs uh, from the roof on Milton Street, and then from the Greenpoint Avenue. And he highlighted the potential, um, problems with the developer's presentation. And, you know, it was, um, not subtle, that, you know, they, they, they clear the angle that Trina referred to across the street from where the Polynese is. Um, it was supposed to be a comparable vantage point with the Polynese and with the new building. And the angles were different, and if you went to the angle exactly that lined up with the Polynese, which is next to the, uh, dining shed outside Cascade, you can clearly see the, the steeple and bell tower from St. Anthony's, so. And something, a similar situation happened with, um, with St. John's, from a different angle, from that bell tower and steeple. So I just want to acknowledge that. Um, you know, uh, the word was, uh, um, deception was used, I think it was a different term, but basically something along those lines, developer, uh, pushback on that, but the, except the, 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 it was not subtle, the, the two, the photo, the difference between Rolfe's photograph and what the, how developers presented. Um, I walked, I walked the, uh, the area, um, and I, I noticed, you know, that those church steeples are so powerful in the neighborhood. Um, but I think we were, I think we're considering, I understand Dante's standpoint, from the design standpoint, um, in reference to the smaller buildings, the, the bank building and the other little building next to that. Um, but then there's what they call the broken tooth, where you have larger buildings kind of to the east of that, and then you have the Polynese, which is partly two stories and one stories, and then you go into these tiny buildings, and then you have the larger, uh, four-story buildings beyond that. And, um, and so, you know, it's, you're, in, in removing the view of those church towers, you know, it's affecting the whole spirit and of the historic district. Uh, but I, I inevitably voted for the design, because I feel like the, the full three-story building, I feel like it, um, I feel good fill, it fills in, I think, in it from, in a way that I think is important. And then from just, you know, from the uses, you know, the, uh, potential for more business and, uh, workers there. I do acknowledge Dante's, um, deep concern about what they might use those terraces for, which are required by the zoning, to have quote-unquote, you know, uh, open space or rear yard, but, um, and then just regarding, the question was asked of Rolfe and Dante, if they were representing the Milton Street Block Association, and they said, no, they were just members of those, members of, of that entity, so that, that distinction was made. Though, you know, they've lived there for a long time, and, and, um, Dante's been incredibly active there, so, um.
I believe Rolfe said, Steve, Rolfe said that he was representing, uh, the block association.
No, he said he wasn't. He said he could get, he could get names of people to show up, but I thought he specifically said no, unless I heard differently. Um, but I, I just say, I weighed, it was, you know, kind of a, a tough decision for me, weighing the, the view and the historical nature versus what I felt was a better design, and the potential for, you know, enhanced businesses there, hopefully not, you know, rooftop bars or event spaces. So that is my, uh, two cents.
I'd, I'd like to make.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, is there any other comments?
Also, the agenda, Madam Chair, the landmark preservation, uh, hearing agenda, still today, Trina, I know we discussed that, is still report that is to demolish and rebuild the building.
I received, they couldn't change it, Dante, they said, the, the guy from Landmarks actually wrote to me, um, after the developer had spoken, and I should have shared it with you. He's, that they understand that it's not a demolish, that it is, the building is, it's keep, they're keeping the retaining walls, and they're building from the existing building, it's not being demolished.
Okay, I didn't receive anything, so to me, still, there was that suspicion that, uh, the hearing agenda is still report a full demolition.
No, he acknowledged that they couldn't change the agenda, that the agenda was out, um, but that, but that it, that it's wrong. The other point I want to make is, if, if the committee or if the, the board were to vote against, to, to say that they wanted the two-story building and to object to the heightened bulk, we wouldn't be able to make the points specific to the design itself that are in the resolution. We would, um, we'd sacrifice our ability to, to, to make those points, and those are points that the LPC one would hope would listen to, and could actually help the design, um, rather than, um, to reject the design totally. And so that.
I disagree, Trina, because the moment the building is smaller, this issue don't exist anymore. So this input is only to favor their design and give.
Yeah, but Dante, I think there's a feeling that LPC will approve the building at that heightened bulk, that it, and so if we are to have, if we are to comment on it, we have to go with the resolution the way it's written. I, that's, it's an opposing point of view, there's the point of view that, that you make, Dante, which is that we should reject it altogether. And then there's the, the opposing point of view, which is what the resolution reflects, is that we give, we mention specifics about how the design could be improved.
Okay, is there any other comments before we take a vote?
Councilmember's had his hand raised for a long time.
Does he want to comment on this issue?
No, uh, I was just hoping to say hello and, and give an update, but I, I was, I've had my hand up for, I don't know, forty-five minutes, but happy to whenever I'm allowed to.
Well, I, I don't, I didn't see your hand, so I'm sorry. Let us finish this vote, Councilor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, a vote has been, a motion by, uh, Kaminsky, second by, uh, Vega. Can we have a roll call vote, please? The motion was to accept the board's resolution. That was the motion, what was the motion?
Yes, the motion was to accept, uh, the resolution made by the committee, presented by. Yes, the motion was to accept the resolution made by the committee, presented by Trina.
Okay, thank you. Gina Artento?
Yes.
Baden Bakewaski? Baden Bakewaski? Lisa Vamonte? Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Wazidis?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
No.
No? Phil Kaepernick?
Yes.
Frank Kaboom?
Yes.
Steven Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chantelli? Teresa Secaro? Stephanie Cuevas? Vernon Daly? Giovanni Di Amato?
Yes.
Eric Drinkwater? Arthur Divanowski?
Yes.
Oifeng? Julia Man de Foster? Cristo Garcia? Joe Goldstein? Joe Goldstein?
Joe Goldstein?
Joe Gross?
Joe Gross?
Yes.
David Helmick?
Yes.
Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Harwitz?
Yes.
Tony Gracias, yes. Moses Zending? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bosina Kaminski?
Yes.
Cory Canton?
Yes.
Paul Cultivone?
Yes.
William Klaxberg?
Yes.
Yolando? Mariliaza?
Yes.
Yolo? Gina McKever?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Sante Machelli?
No.
Sante, okay. Toby Markowitz?
Toby Markowitz?
Yes.
Yes. Rabbi David Needleman? Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Maria Dahmeric?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
No.
Bella Sable? Bella Sable?
She's on and she can't get the sound.
I don't see her. Bella, I see her, I see her name, but.
She's hearing but can't see.
Uh-oh.
Should I call her and ask her her vote or what? Can she call?
I'm new, I'm new at this, Madam Chair, but anyway.
How can she call and?
Call the board office.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Isaac Soford, did I say? William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera?
Yeah, call the community board.
Simon Weiser? And she put herself on the, she put a video? Janice, is she calling or do I just say the numbers, I tally it?
She's calling the community board.
Joanna, please pick up a bell and get her vote.
The phone is not ringing, well, it just rang. Bella? They want to hear your vote. Is it yes or no? Bella said no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's not working. It has to be there, it doesn't make sense. It fell out of the car probably, I don't know. I took it in by mistake when I went in, huh?
Oh, please mute yourself.
Sorry about that.
Twenty-five yes, four no, civil abstention, civil recusal, motion carries. Thank you, Sonia, Trina.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Trina, Councilman Ressler.
Mr. Gary Boy? Yeah. Yeah, I've done it. It's one of the, alright.
Hi, how are you? Sorry about that, I'm just on two community boards at the same time. It's good to be with CB1 tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to say hello. Let me just tell these other folks that I'm going to be right back. CB2, I'll be right back in a minute, I'm sorry, I'm on with CB1, I apologize. So CB1, great to be with you all. Spent a lot of, had a great day running around our district. Started the morning with the Greenpoint Ferry folks, Len Lease and the whole team. It has been, I don't know, eight long freaking months without our ferry. But the good news is we are on the precipice of the restoration of ferry service. So good news is coming very, very, very soon. We have been pushing to get the final approvals done, get the work done, get a temporary plank in place so that we can get that ferry moving again for folks, you know, on the edge of Greenpoint. It can be close to a mile to get to the G train and we need that ferry service. We're, you know, while we work through potentially longer-term plans on the Guinness, there are some short-term improvements that are happening to improve safety conditions. Work is actually, some of the work is actually beginning as soon as this evening. There's going to be some additional pedestrian space at Driggs, Enger and Nassau. We're going to have daylighting at a number of intersections ranging from Bayard all the way up to Java and, and expanded space in the Medians. We are laser focused, myself, Assembly Member Gallagher and folks across the community on actually making McGinnis safe. And these are some changes from the Department of Transportation that are welcomed and I'm pleased to see them getting installed and implemented this fall. I spent part of the afternoon today over at Taylor White with Rabbi Needleman and a couple of our great tenant leaders like Mr. Gross from Jonathan Williams and Samuel Gutman in Independence. NYCHA had taken away a critical walkway connecting Bedford Gardens and the community in Williamsburg to Taylor White, with entrance comes up on Ross Street, I guess what's near White Place. And we're working hard to see that parking lot return back to the community as park space. So we've been making good progress with NYCHA. They were very receptive and responsive to us today. And I'm hopeful that we'll have a positive resolution to share with the community that we can see implemented in the spring. But I want to thank the community in South Williamsburg for their leadership. Last week, we announced a big new tree plan that we could not be more excited about. Over the next four years, we are planting 3,400 trees across District 33. Every viable tree pit or tree bed is getting a new tree. And the Parks Department's been a great partner on this. We're raising money from the community to help us fund more street trees. I really want to thank Katie Denny Harwitz and the North Brooklyn Parks Alliance for being a partner to us in our fiscal conduit on that street tree plan. We're thrilled about it. Street trees are one of the best climate solutions that we can implement together for addressing the urban heat island effect, for addressing stormwater runoff, for just the beautification and quality of life of our neighborhoods. Trees make an enormous difference. So we're excited to see a lot more trees get planted across District 33 over the next, next four years. We're working on some dog run improvements and announcements. We'll be making them next week, including a brand-new dog run over at McCarran Park. We're really focused on trying to improve the conditions across many of our deplorable dog runs in our community. A big thing that I want to highlight is next Monday, November 14th, we are having a Greenpoint and Northside Town Hall. Emily Gallagher will be there, as will a number of other, a number of city agencies, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Sanitation, the Parks Department. This is a chance for you to engage with me and my team and city agencies and get every one of your questions answered. If you have concerns or issues around the neighborhood that you want to highlight for us, come to our town hall, ask your question, ask your question in advance, sign up and join us. It's on all our social media, on our email newsletters and all that stuff. I can try and figure out how to put in the chat, although I apologize, I'm not that competent. But please come through, which should be a really great conversation, an opportunity for you to share your priorities across Greenpoint and the North Side. We'll be doing one, we're doing town halls across every neighborhood in our district. These are virtual on Zoom, so it's easy to jump on while you're doing whatever else you're doing. And I really hope to see you there. And also encourage everyone to come out on Sunday. We have really, we're really excited about the revived Friends of the Goldrick Park group that is doing great work in the Goldrick Park, getting more neighbors involved, cleaning up the park, planting bulbs. We had a great event about three weeks ago, we're having another event on Sunday. Our office is going to be distributing leaf bags for everybody that needs a place to get rid of your leaf bags. That will be there. And we've been doing our best to hold the Parks Department accountable to get this construction project done at McCarran, at the Goldrick. They've completed the northern half of the park, they're now transitioned to the southern half and we're pushing and pushing to try and get that done fast. So if any questions for us or anything that I can do that'd be helpful, never hesitate to reach out to me and our team, District 33 at council.nyc.gov or 718-875-5200. And really just appreciate all the effort that CB1 members and community members put into making our neighborhoods even better and appreciate the opportunity to say hello.
Thank you, Councilman, be safe, be healthy.
Thank you, Chair.
Next, land use, Del Teague.
Thank you. So we didn't have anything officially on the agenda for, for land use. However, our chair asked me to bring up the several requests that we had by developers for after-hour variances. So that these are variances where they ask to be allowed to work beyond the normal hours that they're allowed. Often it's on the weekends or in the evenings or very early in the morning. Now, some years ago, the community board voted to not support these requests because of the, because of the request of the residents saying that they really needed to have a break from all of the noise and the extra traffic that, that these developers make and produce and that they just needed their weekends to have some peace and quiet. So since it did really, since our letter, and we, and so traditionally, when the city notifies us that a developer is asking for approval of one of these variances, we give them the letter that says that, that we, that the official position of the community board, because of the prior vote, is that we don't support these variances. So I just want to make it clear that we, there's, there has not been a change in the community board's policy or response. Now, we had, at the time of the meeting, I knew of two variance requests. One was for, from Williamsburg Houses, asking to have, be able to work on Saturdays from nine to four, I think it was. And the way they describe it, their work, their work would only be done in internal corridors and hallways. And they said that they really needed to do this because in doing, as many of you know, because Williamsburg Houses is a historic and very large project that we've been very supportive of. They, when they do the renovations, they take tenants who are already there and they move them out of their normal apartment, move them to an empty apartment until they're finished and then they move them back again. So they're hoping, they were hoping to be able to get the work done as soon as possible because of the inconvenience to the tenants of moving, moving them around. And the other thing that the developer for Williamsburg Houses assured us was that this is not going to make any noise to the outside community. This is all internal work, plumbing, rerouting, Wi-Fi, things like that. So on the other hand, the other request from Alley Construction for 111 Clay Street, as far as we know, that will, that will involve outside, outdoor work. At least that was our understanding. Now, I, at the time, at the committee meeting, I said I thought that it was kind of unusual for requests to be made for just internal work. However, after the committee meeting, I then realized that there was yet a third request. And that's for 676 Lorimer Street. And that request is also just to do some internal work, which the developer says will not create any noise or, or traffic or any kind of other infringement on, on the lives and the quality of life of the residents outside. So apparently, the idea that, you know, they would be asking for permission to work just internally is not so rare because we now have two, two sets of requests. So we did not, we felt that it was not proper to try to take a vote on this because the first resolution not supporting these variances was made pursuant to requests from the community and this was not on our agenda. But we did have a general discussion and as I mentioned in my report, some members felt we should, the standing resolution should remain as it was. Others, however, thought, well, maybe we should revisit it, especially since we now know that we have some requests that are just for internal work, which it, which may not involve affecting the quality of life of people outside of the building versus the, the work that's going to be done and that's going to be making noise and affecting everybody's peace and quiet. So several of us realized that the Williamsburg Houses has a tenant association. And we thought that perhaps the, the developer could get support from the tenants association so that we could be reassured that indeed there would, that this would not be affecting the, you know, the quality of life of the residents. And then after the, and the developer agreed to do that. However, Joanna also contacted the president of the tenants association and the tenants association has notified us that they are actually, they are in favor of the developer getting the work done faster and getting support for the variance from us. So I, I don't know what the board wants to do with this. It was not officially made a part of our agenda. However, I have two thoughts. One is that I think that we should continue to always err on the side of protecting the, the, the quality of life of our residents, especially since the, the, the community, individual community residents have made it over the years very clear to us that they really would not like to support the additional noise and work in the evenings, very early in the morning and on the weekends. On the other hand, it seems to me, and I think to a number of people on the committee, that it doesn't really make sense to have that attitude toward variances for work that's being done strictly internally. And so for instance, if a building is already occupied, we could perhaps get, get support from the residents of the building that they would like to see the work done faster and they don't mind having the work done on the weekends. And if there's no one in the building and if the community board is assured or we're convinced that the work that will be done will not affect the quality of life of the residents, then we may want to have, you know, two categories. Might want to continue with not supporting the extra hours with the, for outside work and or, and having the inside work handled on a, on a, on an individual case-by-case basis. That's a thought, it's a suggestion. And I guess I have to leave this open to discussion. And let me just mention that the city can always, what, what we suggest to the city, it's just a recommendation. It's, the city is not bound by our suggestion.
Any discussion on this item?
Yes, can I make a comment, Iris Cabrera?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to be clear because I believe we had this conversation when Sante was asking for extra hours for the construction of the building of the Broadway Triangle.
Yeah.
And also, okay, I just wanted, because I thought I heard about this.
Yes. That's one of the, that was one of my reasons for saying, look, we, we did not approve the Broadway Triangle. I don't know why we would, you know, want to move to approve other developers who are, you know, going to be doing, creating a lot of noise on the weekends if they get their, their variances. Yes, yes, Iris. Okay, so I feel that if it's something that is going to affect the.
Okay, so I feel that if it's something that is going to affect the community, we would, I feel that we should continue with the same idea that don't give permission. But if it's something that is inside and the tenant or the people in the building, I agree. I think we should take that into consideration and, and see case-by-case. This is my opinion.
I, I personally agree with you, but I guess we should have some, we have some.
Speaker.
Who's speaker?
Cory has her hand up.
Cory has her hand up.
Joe.
Joe.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi, this is Mr. Gross. I'm a, I'm a TA president where we was having construction the last two years. And from my experiences, a lot of residents is used to the noise for the whole week. They need the weekend to be quiet. A lot of residents is home on the weekends, Sundays, and they would like really to have a day which is relaxing with no noise. I would recommend they should not work on the weekend. I have that experience in my development with the same question, and everybody was against working the weekend.
What, what about, how about? How about as Iris, as Iris, if it's all just?
Joe, wait, 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 wait. Joe, Joe, please mute yourself when you're not speaking because we're getting to the end of the period. Okay, Dell.
So how about if, as Iris suggested, if it's, if, if the work is only being done internally, that we take into consideration if the tenants approve it and say that they're, they're, that they would be fine with getting the work done faster.
Internally, working is a lot of noise. It's a lot of free help, it vibrates the neighbors, it's a lot of noise even internally. It's a fact.
Can I interject, Madam Chair?
Ms. Cory has her hand up. I'm trying to watch everybody, but Cory has her hand up.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Sonia. I wanted to agree. I, I think that just generally as a resident, there's a lot of feedback that there's too much construction noise in the neighborhood. You know, it is true that there are times that internal work isn't an, actually an issue, but I agree with Dell and the point of there being some kind of a letter that's provided. And so if we could give that instruction so that a developer, you know, or in the instance with the gentleman who was on the beginning of this call, if it is that it's just internal work within his own home, then I think something like that doesn't necessarily bother others. But otherwise, I think that the Land Use Committee is going to be barraged with requests. And generally speaking, our neighborhood needs a little bit of peace.
Okay, I see Jan's hand. Jan Peterson?
I'm here. No, I would say is that we, obviously, we talked about this before. The, I said the, the rules should be the same as we gave to the triangle. We told them that if they went out and got agreement from the people that lived around the triangle, we were open. And I would say the same thing to public housing tenant groups because every tenant group is not so organized that they know what all the tenants on their floor think. I think it's very important that the people that are affected get a chance to, I mean, either we don't add it, or if we do add it, we have to say that the people that are personally affected by the construction should have signed the letter saying it's okay. Because every developer has organizers that can go door-to-door if they really want to do it. And I noticed that when we did the Satanix Loser UJO, they did not come back with a letter from the people that lived around there. I don't know what's happening now, it would be interesting to know. But I would just add that as another thing, if we are putting that criteria in Dell, that it's very specific because every tenant group doesn't talk to all their tenants either. You know, every, everybody doesn't get down to the bottom of, to the people that are affected, that's all. And otherwise, I go with the last speaker.
Santay Machale?
Have I raised up, I have my hands up before, Madam Chair.
I'm going by the hands I see.
Sorry, my, my digital end doesn't work, so that's why I was.
Well, I see your hand up on the screen.
Yeah, because it doesn't work, my digital end there. So, but you let me know, if somebody else was before me, I don't know.
Go ahead, Sonia.
I just wanted to echo, you know, it can't be different rules for different fools. We made a resolution, we determined a decision, and I've had experience where internal work in my building has caused chaos. So I don't think it's quiet whether it's not hammering, no. They've done plumbing and the workers come, the truck, uh-uh, it's not quiet. So I don't think there should be different rules for different fools. We should stick to our resolution, and that's that.
Okay, Santay, and then Adam Myers.
Yeah, no, I, I want to, I want to add something. I remember vaguely William Vega stated something at the last committee member, that one time that the city recognized one of the Community Board recommendations, we should take on that. So, you know, that's one definitely first point, I believe, very important. And then also to, I concur with, with Joel and with other, with Sonia and others. And I spent many years working in construction site too. I had a manufacturing business. I know what noise and how noise can be produced and what does it mean, it's interior work. You know, you could have an unjoined building, most of the noise are actually produced from interior work. You use a circular saw, you use a jackhammer, you know, then there's like a twenty power drill that I use. You know, there is so many. Then there is the involved, the delivery and the truck they are coming over the weekend. They are connected to that, I believe, opening a construction site. Something is, is some individual which they can do legally. They want to paint their house, probably painting a house, I don't think it's a major noisy type of, of work. But any other, sheetrock, drilling, mounting studs, whatever that means, even running wire, when you had to drill because you're running wire, is going to produce noise, is going to produce vibration. And so it's kind of very vague and very subtle way to allow to happen something which we cannot define what it is exactly. And so I'm definitely, I will be against that because I know it's going to be impact. And definitely association, as Jan said, you know, who knows, who is really affected. Maybe only three, four people will be affected. And then they should pay the consequences and have no voice in that regard. So I'm against that. I believe if you are a developer, if you are a manufacturer, if you are a subcontractor, you, you know.
Machale, we got your point. Adam Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm inclined to differ from most of the folks that have already weighed in. I think that this is an area where some greater flexibility and case-by-case consideration might actually be a powerful tool for the Community Board. I think that a lot of people feel frustrated that the people that live in this community have so little control over the direction that the neighborhood's development has taken. They have relatively little input on, you know, on a given site, what project goes in, whether it's affordable housing or whether it's, you know, a loud rooftop bar. And while it may seem like a small thing, the ability to grant these variances is actually a sort of tool that we as a Community Board could use to encourage some kinds of development and discourage others. When you grant this variant, variance, you allow the project to happen more quickly and you reduce the costs of that project. And when you don't, you lengthen the project and you increase the costs. And so if, if we apply this thoughtfully, we could actually have some real impact on the kinds of development that we're encouraging and discouraging in our neighborhood. And I don't know why we wouldn't try to exercise that power on behalf of our constituents. The other point that I want to make, though, is regardless of what decision we come to, whether we come up with a new rule or whether we stick with the same old oppose everything, I think the most important thing is, is real transparency here because it's, it's very clear that the people writing these emails into us don't have a good sense of what the process is, don't have a good sense of what the rule is. And that's in nobody's best interest because we're not sure what to do with their responses and they're not sure even what they're asking for. And so whatever the rule is, we should be very transparent about and very, do our best to communicate this publicly. We, you know, we could have information on our website about what the Community Board's policy and procedure are with respect to requests for support on variance applications. And I think that would be helpful, whatever the substantive rule is. Thank you.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to add one thing to, to that. I'd just like to respond. I think that, um, I, I wouldn't see this as a way to discourage certain types of development, encourage others. I, I think if we get into that, this is, this is going to be chaos and there's going to be tremendous sense of, well, the Community Board is just allowing it for projects they like or they, or some people on the Community Board like and don't like. And in the middle will be our poor residents who will, you know, who are going to be subject to all of the inconvenience and the harassment of the, the extra noise. The more I listen to people, the more I'm inclined to go with want, with leaving it as it is, continuing to not support these, these, these extra hour variances. And I think in terms of other things like the rooftop gardens and the, and, and the roof, not gardens, the rooftop restaurants and, and clubs, I think we've made pretty clear our sense that we don't want them. And it's some, it's a fight that we're in the middle of. But anyways, I, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Steve.
One, and then Steve Chasler.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I hear my fellow board members, you know, just about just the hell that is, you know, construction, whether it's external, internal, especially after hours or on the weekends. I just heard from lots of people who are on the board and I've experienced just interior next, in the building next door when they were redoing all the apartments next door, just the sledgehammers, et cetera, et cetera. But, but I feel like if, you know, D O P is kind of, you know, they, they're now deferring to the board to respond to these applications or these requests. I feel like we should at least do due diligence. I know maybe we're, we're making a lot more work for us, but I feel like there should be a process where the board and the appropriate committee is made aware, and it was included in their committee report, that these applications came through. And, and just consider for a moment, I don't know, I'm just saying, is there an emergency situation? Not necessarily if it has X amount of affordable housing, but say there's an emergency repair to a building or apartment or something that can't, you know, using the normal, you know.
Steve, it's my understanding that the city has assured us that if there's an emergency or if it's for a school, they're, they're going to allow the variance. So that's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Well, I don't know if there's something even, you know, okay, let's, you know, that's good to hear. But because I, again, I was, I, you know, was taken back by the Broadway Triangle request because I was, I was not aware of the board policy that was passed nine years ago. So I just feel like that, you know, as we, as we go on through the years, we bring on new board members, I feel like people need to have awareness of, of what the policy is and just have like, you know, pass through the committee, if it is a land use committee, at least acknowledge, we see this application for X, for X, you know, company Acme Construction to do this work. And, you know, it doesn't adhere to our policy. And, and I know if something potentially could be flagged, I, I don't know, you know, necessarily what that is. It's beyond, like, if it's gone beyond D O B's emergency threshold. But I hear everyone, but I feel like I'm kind of, you know, picking up on Adam's sentiment that maybe there, there, there might be extenuating circumstance somewhere. I think, you know, Marie Vieira, I think she was brought up about the Williamsburg Houses and bringing broadband or wifi to, to the residents there. But then the other side of, well, maybe that, that's great, but the tenants want to go to hell on the weekends to have that installed. But, but, but I feel like we should have those, we should have the conversation hopefully not, you know, with overburdening the committee.
For what?
Mary, I got some hands up. I don't see your hand up.
Yeah, because it doesn't.
Let me call Katie Dennett-Harvitz and then you can speak next, okay?
Okay, mine doesn't work, that's why.
Okay, I'm sorry. Katie?
Thank you, Chair. Mary, you're, you're welcome to go ahead of me if you, if you're head, if you, if you like.
I just have a short comment. I am actually living right next door to a new building that is going up, new construction. And my house is soundproofed and I hear every nail that is being put into the wall. Inside, outside, doesn't matter. It is horrendous. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll, I'll go. Yeah, Mary, I hear you. I, I have forty-story towers being built around me all the time. And what I was going to say is I, I just to echo Adam and, and I think Steve's comment is that I do think reviewing them on a case-by-case basis could provide accountability. And also to hear, you know, for me, you know, this is personal, everyone has their personal experiences with construction in this neighborhood. A compelling ask would be to shorten the construction timeline because as, as horrible as it is to experience it, my preference would be to experience it in a more concise area, even if, in concise time period, rather than have it extended, you know, and that's a personal preference, right? But that, understanding the difference of what that time might make could influence whether or not people can deal with it on those additional hours. And the other thing is that, you know, they might do it anyway, right? And so you might have neighbors kind of battling these construction sites who go against it and just do construction anyway. And, and sort of doing this and, and potentially allowing it on a case-by-case basis could be a way to provide information to people that some folks are allowed to do it, that might encourage them to say in between certain hours that they might adhere to the community's wishes in that way. So I think Adam maybe put it a little more eloquently than I, but I just wanted to share my agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Is there any other discussion? Or anybody?
Yeah, I, Dell, I, Dell, again, I just want to mention that I'm wondering if this would be opening up a nightmare case-by-case for all of these different requests that come through? And how are we really going to differentiate from one builder versus another builder when? I, I don't know. I, I just wonder that, I don't understand what we're opening up for ourselves here. But that's my thought.
William Vega?
Thank you. I just want to, I think it was Dell I mentioned. I used to work for the city's small business services and I was with the emergency response unit. If there's an emergency, as long as it's a licensed professional, they get started with the work and then the permits will be pulled afterwards. I think, is, I think we should have a committee, a subcommittee to review this, to see how many of these requests we get. And then I think we should try it out, you know, maybe a test case. That's my, a test pilot case. Thank you.
Thank you, Wap Vega. Sounds like a good idea.
I, I still don't understand what we would be, how would we allow one development versus another? They're all going to be making, these, these developments do pretty much all the same kind of noise. They make the same noise, they make the same kinds of interference in people's peace and quiet. I, I don't know how we're going to, how we would then differentiate one from the other. Yeah.
Yes, who's speaker?
It's Marie. Yeah, I, I just want to, who do we represent? Do we represent all the people that are building all these high rises? Or do we represent the, the community that constantly comes in front of us and say that they work all week and they need to sleep during the weekend? If we had, we have something already set saying no, we should just leave it and not, and not keep this nightmare going. I'm, that's what I'm saying. If I represent my community people, I'm going to go where they say because they're the ones that live in the community. These construction people, you know, it's getting, it's getting unbearable and more high rises are being built. I'm sorry, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Public housing residents will always say no, construction the weekend.
I would like to make, I would like to give, after hearing all this, I would like to make a motion that we leave our, that we leave our policy as it is, where we do not support the extra hours. And then if there's an emergency or, or. And then if there's an emergency or a school or the city decides that there are, you know, extenuating circumstances, then of course, we understand if the city grants the, the variance.
I'll second that.
I second.
Who's second it?
Lisa Vermonti.
Okay. Del, Lisa Vermonti, can we have a roll call vote please on?
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yes.
So I, I heard Del say that on the one hand, we'll stick with our old policy, but then I also heard something about a caveat that, you know, we leave it to the Department of Buildings to identify whether there are extenuating circumstances here, which I don't believe was part of the original policy. And so I'd just like clarification on what the vote is, what the proposed policy is.
I'll take, I'll, I'll remove the, that's a good point. I'll remove the extenuating circumstances. So the motion would be, we would understand if it's an emergency or a school building that we would understand if they, if they granted the variance. I believe that's what the city policy is. Am I still seconded?
Yeah. Lisa, Lisa Vermonti? One quick question. So with the result of the, of the, of the vote, are we going to do as Adam suggested, put the resolution on the website that people know the contractors? I mean, share it?
That's not, that's not part of the motion, Son.
But I was, okay, never mind.
I have a question also. So what, so then if this motion passes, what happens when D O B sends a request to the board? Then what will happen?
Then we send out our, the, the, a letter saying what our, what our policy is. We, we will send out.
And the members will be informed accordingly as well?
Yes, of course.
That's what I was meant to ask. So do we put it publicly? That's what I wanted to ask.
I mean, if it's, if it's a resolution, then it is public.
Oh, okay. Ready for the vote? Ready, Madam Chair?
Yes, can we vote?
Add my hand up too. I'm just saying is that you're asking, Sonia's asking, will it go on the website? Are you motioning? I think it should go on the website. I think people have been bringing up quite often that they want more information on the website so people could see what to do because they're confused and people didn't even remember the nine-year thing. So I would hope that this time we put it on the website, our policy. And I'd like to add that to the resolution, if you would accept that, Del.
Um, sure, why not? Let's, let's continue with the vote.
Um, real quick, sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak again, but this is David. I spoke earlier.
I'm sorry, David. I'm sorry, David. This is the board meeting. You're not allowed to speak.
Could I make a comment, Madam Chair, before the vote? This is Paul Kelterborn. I, I think the problem with a blanket statement like this is it leaves, you know, there's no discretion for people like this earlier speaker, you know, who might just be a homeowner doing interior work. We talk about representing the community and I can understand that if there's a large development site, that's a huge disruption to a lot of people's lives on the weekends. But I think we're also, if we're representing the community, you know, it's people that are also doing, you know, interior work on their house. And, and so I'm not sure if this kind of like one-size-fits-all approach is really the right one.
So we're, we're, we're all voting now, so can we have this vote, please? It'll either pass or it won't.
Sonia, call the roll, please. Roll call vote, please.
Deana Argento.
Abstain.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Can we?
Who's speaking? Sonia, please call the roll. Barnum Bakawaski. Barnum Bakawaski. Lisa Vermonti.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Wazides. Eric Wazides. Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Philip Copernico.
Yes.
Frank Cabon. Steven Chasler.
No.
Michael Chantelli. Teresa Sensato. Stephanie Cuevas. Ron Daly. Giovanni Di Amato.
Yes.
Eric Drinkwaters. Aaron. Arthur Divanowski.
Yes.
Lloyd Fling. Julia Amanda Foster. Cristo Garcia. Joe Ghost.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe. Joe Ghost.
Joe Ghost.
Yes.
David Helmick.
Yes.
Sabrina Kelp. Help. Katie Dennett Harwitz.
Sonia, I can barely hear you, but, uh, no.
Katie? Okay, no. Sorry. Sonia, yes. Moses ending. Robert Jeffrey?
No.
No? Bolzina Kaminsky?
Abstain.
Abstain? Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kilterborn?
No.
Paul Kilterborn?
No.
William Klasberg? Yolando? Marie Liaison?
Yes.
Yolo? Trina McKiever?
No.
Adam Myers?
No.
Dante Mattelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Toby Makowitz?
This is a no, I'll be a no.
Guys, gotta mute yourself. Toby Makowitz?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I was unmuted, yes.
Bye-bye, David Needleman?
I have a, I have a project pending now, the Broadway Triangle. Am I refused or not?
What's your vote? What is your vote? Yes, no, abstain?
I refuse myself because I have a project now.
Choose yourself. Okay. Karen Nieves? No. Karen Nieves? David, please mute yourself. Mr. Helmick, please mute yourself. Guys, help me. I think my thing is going, my laptop is going bad. Karen Nieves? Karen? Maria Domeric?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sables?
Bella, can you, can you say your vote? Bella, say yes.
Okay. Isaac Soffer? Del T?
Yes.
William Vega?
No.
Maria Vieira? Simon Weiser?
Sonia? It, it's Eric. Did you get my, my abstention?
No, thank you, Eric.
Okay.
Nineteen yes, seven no, two abstentions, one recusal. Motion carries.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Del.
Thanks.
S L A, Dabonaski?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. We held our meeting on October 25th. We had forum with six members present. I hope our board members read our report. We had six new license applications, ten previously postponed, eleven renewals. I would like to ask the board to accept our report as it is. Can I have a motion?
Sonia makes a motion.
I second it.
Sonia, Gina Barrows, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Barnum Bakawaski? Lisa Vermonti?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes, yes.
Eric Wazides? Eric?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Copernico? Phil? Phil, yes? Frank? Frank Cabon? Frank? Steve Chasler?
Yes.
Michael Chantelli? Teresa Sensato? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni Di Amato?
Yes.
Aaron Drinkwaters? Arthur Divanowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Fling? Julia Amanda Foster? Cristo Garcia?
Yes.
Joe Ghosting?
Yes.
Joe Gross?
Joe Gross?
Yes.
David Helmick?
Yes.
Sabrina Kelp? Katie Dennett Harwitz?
Yes.
Sonia Glacias, yes. Moses ending? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bolzina Kaminsky? Bolzina?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Corey Canton? Corey? Corey Canton? Paul Kilterborn?
Yes.
William Klasberg?
Yes.
Yolando? Marie Liaison?
Yes.
Yolo? Trina McKiever?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Dante Mattelli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz?
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman?
Yes.
Karen Nieves? Carrie? Maria Domeric? Janice Peterson? Ja- Jan?
Yes.
Thank you. Bella Sables? Bella?
Bella say yes.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer? Del T?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieira? Simon Weiser? Thirty-one yes, seven no, seven abstentions and seven recusal. Motion carries. Thank you, Sonia.
The last thing, Madam Chair, I just want to say that our next S L A meeting will be held on November 28th, right after Thanksgiving at 6:30 PM at Swing Your Sixties.
Thank you, Dabonaski.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Bylaws, Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on October 26th. This was the first meeting of this term for the bylaws committee. Our stated agenda involved.
I think I'm telephoned, David, they unlocked it.
I'm sorry?
Everybody, please mute yourself if you're not speaking.
Our stated agenda was to review the current bylaws and to discuss parliamentary issues. And the discussion that we had was basically one of considering our current bylaws, how they're being employed, and whether we thought there were any changes that we might want to work on over the course of the next year. We were all well aware of the fact that the bylaws as currently written have a sort of circular process for the consideration of actual amendments. The proposed amendments need to be sent to the chair before they can be, you know, considered and recommended by the committee. So we were not considering any for actual recommendation. Rather, we were just sort of sketching out a plan for what we'd be working on this year. And we came up with a number of, a number of ideas. I won't say suggestions because there were no internal votes held. But the ideals, ideas we discussed included establishing a limitation on the number of non-board member participants in committees. That one was probably the most discussed. Some folks felt quite strongly that there were certain committees where non-board members wielded sort of an inordinate amount of power with respect to the votes they held. Others felt that no non-board committee members actually bring a lot of diverse experience and expertise to their board, or to their committee, rather. If you look at the reports, you'll see I actually included there a breakdown of committee by committee, what the, what the involvement of board versus non-board members looks like. You'll see that almost all committees have fewer than 30% of their members, the non-board folks, with the exception of the Economic Development Committee, which is like 56% to 44% board to non-board. But I digress. So that was the first idea. We also discussed the fact that in past years, the bylaws committee hasn't had much to discuss. And so whether we might want to exempt them from the four meeting requirement for, you know, for four meetings in a given year. We discussed figuring out ways to make the bylaws more widely available. We thought the bylaws might discuss the, the more fundamental goals and objectives of the community board so that we had some reminder as to what we're working toward. We discussed whether the bylaws should include some sort of personnel practice code, helping to hold folks accountable to their job descriptions. There was discussion of whether the bylaws are doing enough to regulate conflicts of interest on the board, whether the bylaws should include a social compact, laying out how we are all agreeing to interact with one another in this board and on the committees. There was a proposal that we removed the reference to Robert's Rules of Order from the bylaws. A proposal that we limit and clarify the power of the different executive officers. There was a thought that some folks are not meeting their responsibilities. Some folks might not be aware of what the responsibilities are. Some folks may have so many responsibilities that the job is sort of impracticable. And so maybe there's a better distribution to be done there. There was a suggestion, well, a discussion of how the bylaws might help in improving the transfer of institutional memory so that we get new members up to speed on the past work of the board, ways that we might better improve compliance with other governings, governing laws like the open meetings law, potential term limits for executive officers. And then my own suggestion was to improve the formatting of the bylaws document itself, which is in all caps and thus not optimal from eligibility perspective. As I said at the beginning, we are not currently recommending any of these. What I intend to do is put these in a letter, submit it to the board for referral back to the committee so that we can dig a little bit deeper and discuss the merits of these proposals before coming back to this board with a recommendation. We did make one resolution, though. Several folks noted that they did not have current copies of the bylaws. You know, folks were working from the 2018 version or things like that. And so there was a proposal, there was a motion that the board include a copy of the current bylaws on the C B one website. That was seconded and the yeas had it. So the bylaw committee does recommend to this board that a copy of the current bylaws be included on the C B one website. And if anyone were so inclined to make a motion to this effect, that would be appreciated.
David Needleman, a motion to approve.
I second that. Iris Cabrera?
Rabbi Needleman and Iris Cabrera, roll call vote, please. Thank you. Deana Argento? Deana? Barnum Bakawaski? Lisa Vermonti?
Abstain.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Wazides?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes, Sonia.
Thank you. Phil Copernico?
Yes.
Frank Cabon? Steven Chasler?
Yes.
Michael Chantelli? Teresa Sensato? Stephen, Stephanie Cuevas?
Ronald Daly? Giovanni Di Amato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibranowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Fain? Julia Amanda Foster? Cristo Garcia?
Yes.
Joe Ghosting?
Yes.
Joe Gross?
Joe Gross?
Yes.
David Helmick?
Yes.
Sabrina Help? Katie, Danny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky? Bozina? Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kiltaborn?
Yes.
William Claswell?
Yes.
Yolando? Marie Liaison?
Yes.
Yolo? Trina McKever?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Santi Macheli? Sante? Toby Markowitz? Toby? Rabbi David Needleman?
Yes.
Karen Nieves? Maria Dahmeric?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable?
Yes, yes, yes.
Isaac Sofer? Del T?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera? Simon Weiser?
Santi Macheli, yes. Sorry about-
Gina Argento, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-eight, yes. Civil no, one exemption, civil recusal. Motion carries. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
That was the substance of our report. The final note that I'll make again is that if folks have other ideas for changes they'd like to see to the bylaws that were not reflected in the report, you know, there's a process for getting those considered by the bylaws committee. You can send a, an email to that effect to the, to the board chair, and she will refer it out to our committee for consideration. So please feel free to do that, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your report, Adam. Adam, for the record, I want, I want, I noticed that you put in your report that the item about the non-board members had been referred to me. The item about board members and non-board members has not been sent to me in writing. So let's, let's make the record straight. I have not gotten an email on that item to refer to the committee.
I understand, Madam Chair, and I'm, I, I, I'm sure you're correct. I was just reflecting-
Well, I, well, I know I'm correct.
... that was made in the committee.
I, I know I'm correct. We, we went back and checked, and I have nothing in writing. Plus, we didn't remember anything, so I have nothing. There's no reason for me to get an item for a committee and not refer it to the committee. If I don't refer items to the committees, the committees can't do their job.
Thank you for that clarification, Madam Chair.
You're quite welcome.
Madam Chair, I have my hand up.
Yes, Trina.
I just wanted to make one comment about non-board members serving on committees. On both the Land Use Committee and the Environmental Committee, we have non-board members who are really great participants, really vital participants, and actually better attenders sometimes than other committee members, but who really offer a richness to, to the discussions. And I think it would be a real shame to lose them.
Thank you, Trina. I, there, there were definitely folks in the conversation that agreed with that position. To the extent you were inclined to put a, put a comment together to that effect and forward it to me, then maybe that'll be a contribution to any further discussions that we have on that issue.
Sure, I'd be happy to, and I can fill in detail, too.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Somebody need to send me an email that this item should refer, be referred to the committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Steve Chesler, Environmental Protection?
May I ask a question?
Madam Chair, Katie and I have our hand up. Yes, Katie.
Well, I'll, I'll echo Trina's comments. As a former non-voting board member, turned into board member, I think it's incredibly valuable, also is a stepping stone for full membership. But I, I had my hand raised, Adam, to, to clarify kind of process. So if, if, are you saying there is going to be a dialogue about those proposed changes at your next meeting, and which will then be bounced to the chair afterwards? So if we were, or, or if we have feedback, should we be writing letters to the chair? I just, I didn't quite understand how we could provide feedback at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, before we can substantively consider those ideas as sort of proposed amendments, they need to be first forwarded to the chair. And so I'm going to be communicating to the chair, asking that she circulate these back to the committee for consideration. So they will be considered and discussed in more depth at the next meeting. And so, yeah, to the extent that folks want to join that meeting after the date is noticed or submit comments for consideration at that meeting, I'll definitely try to notice that meeting as far in advance as I can, so that folks have the heads up.
I, I'd like to state that any information sent to me about any item for any committee will be forwarded to the entire committee.
I have a question, too, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I raised my hand. I wanted to quickly speak about this issue. I wasn't present because I was out of town for the bylaws committee. My major concern with the, the issues with the non-members versus the board members, it's quite, for me, it just seems like a lot of our board members, our colleagues, are overextending themselves when it comes to committees, and therefore, they're not being present. And because they don't show up and other people vote, there's an issue. I think it concerns those that are board members and they serve on the committees to be present. Because, you know, I think that, again, we all community residents, and our fellow neighbors deserve to also serve on the committee and have their voice and their vote within our committee, because that will help us know where our neighbors are at, with a certain, their position of certain standing and whatever issues may arise. So I think for me, we have to look at ourselves as committee members and, you know, do the right thing and show up.
Yeah, I have a question, too, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Now, what, what will happen, for example, I mean, it, it's a great idea, I believe, to have, you know, a non-board member, probably on a, on a good ratio, I would say. But what about if we have too many non-board members that they belong to a specific organization? So, you know, they are there with a specific agenda, goal, and that could definitely probably put out of balance. You know, do, are we gonna have a way that we can identify as a different voices from the community? Like, they are non-board member? Or, you know, are we gonna be able to, to verify? Because that probably is something, you know, they could put out of balance entirely a committee. You know, it's, we have a group of people, have a, a group agenda dedicated, you know, maybe to disrupt certain balances. So that's something I would just launch it out as a possibility.
Well, we never know what anybody's agenda is when they get involved. But from my understanding and the conversations is that this person, they want to limit the number of non-board members to two. They want to put a cap on how many non-board members can be on a committee. And I've tried not to overwhelm the committees, because I can't put more non-board members on than I do board members. So I, everybody, people that want to be a non-board member, they don't always get what they want. Because it's, it's a lot on a committee, and I can't keep throwing them on. Every, everybody want to get on the same committees. Some people don't get no committee, because they put in, they put, everybody put in for the same thing. So I, I, you know, I try to do my best to balance it, but I would never overload a committee with non-board members. And people, committee, committee, committee chairs have come to me, you know, and asked me to stop putting people on their committees, or to take somebody off, you know. So it's a balance, it's a balance. We want the committed, the community to be involved. I have no problem with our non-board members, because I think it's a learning process. Because if they're already on a committee, once they get on the board, you know, it's very beneficial to them, because they're always, they already know how the board work. But, you know, my understanding, we want it to be limited to non-board members. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I just raised my hand that I was concerned on that point, which, which is committees that have no external people. I mean, we were looking at, what you're saying is that you're trying to get a balancing number. But the more people that we can make, we can make sure that there are committees that have no external members at all, and I, it's because they're not outreach-ing, probably. And, and the second point was that you've raised at the last meeting. We don't have active committee on education and an active, and I, and right now, we have, I think, looking at the fact that the police, police department, Board of Ed, and the Health and Hospital Corporation all have their own boards, their own boards. We need to relook at that, and that is, could be a bylaw thing, about how do we bring that all together? Because it's really, we have one community board, and it should have all the main areas of local government. We are the local government for our community. So I just want to add that, that there, that's why Adam is saying we need to have more discussion, because I think people haven't thought through a number of these things in the, in the last few years. So that's why we want to talk. But other people, they have other ideas about this. I keep worrying that the police are not there, and the, you know, I don't want to run the police meetings, two on top of the community board. And the hospital, I don't even know when they meet anymore. And the Board of Ed is certainly important to have one good education committee. So I just want to raise that those are concerns, and nobody has to do anything, but they're pretty-
Yeah, well, the reason, the reason you don't see non-board members on a committee, or you see very few, that means that nobody applied to get on those committees.
That's what I mean, but the, but somebody has to do outreach about, and that's, uh, uh, Sanzi. We were going to do more outreach to help, to help the committee to figure out how to get involved. A lot of people still don't know, and it's not anybody's fault. We're just saying it's an area that we have to keep improving on. You know, I think a lot of people-
I'm sorry, John, but it just seems to me that there's certain interests, that pique people's interest. There's certain committees where people feel strongly about, and others where they don't.
Well, that's true, too.
It seems to be an issue, I'm sorry, there seems to be an issue where a lot of the committees where they claim that are flooded, that are flooded with a lot of non-board members. It seems to me it's an interest that pique, that, what, something that piques their interest. So no matter the outreach that we're making, it's what people find important to them, that's where they're gonna go to. But it gets-
Okay, okay.
But it's not about, I don't think it's about how many non-members are on the committee. I think it's how many of our colleagues are not attending their committee. Okay, guys, we're gonna have to end this discussion. This will be taken up with the bylaws committee, and we're gonna move on. Environmental Protection, Steve Chesler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, with the, the committee met two days ago on the seventh. Right before our full board meeting, but it was the only time we could get the parties to come in to talk about the New Heart Superfund site. So, so, but before we, we got to that, we first had Three Twenty-Five Kent LLC come in to discuss a revocable consent order that was submitted to the board review from City Department of Transportation. The Domino, one of Two Trees, which owns Domino, has a wastewater treatment facility on-site that it's essentially under, where it's going to be a pub, a privately-owned public plaza, essentially, you know, next to the refinery building that's under construction. But essentially, it, it takes in wastewater from toilets and laundry and sinks and showers, and treats it, and then sends some of it back into the system to be used like for toilets and for irrigation and for their cooling system, for their internal HVAC system. And so we're, you know, the committee members and community members are very praising of, that they have this system that will process four hundred and ten thousand gallons of water a day and take a huge burden off our municipal sewer system and reduce water usage on the site. So we really, you know, hope this will catch on, and other developers will do the same thing. But because they need to lay a ductile iron pipe for, to move this water from across Kent Avenue on South Fourth Street, from their Three Twenty-Five Kent Avenue building to this Publikon Plaza. It goes across Kent Avenue, obviously, it's a public street. So they need, you know, consent order to be able to do that. And the Kent Avenue will not, it'll be partially open for the project. They don't see it taking more than a few days, minimal disruption. And, you know, they've been doing a lot of work down there on the full Domino project. So, you know, I think they are, you know, very mindful of what, that situation there. So the, and also, if the system fails, the wastewater treatment system fails, it'll just, the water will revert back to the municipal sewer system, so they have that covered. So essentially, we only, we did not have a quorum with five members, but we had a, a vote to, for consensus recommendation to approve this consent order for laying waste pipe, wastewater pipe at Three Twenty-Five Kent Avenue. So I need a motion to approve this order.
Trina, I'll make a-
I make a motion?
David Needleman, second the motion?
Trina and Rabbi Needleman, roll call vote please. Who made the motion? Rabbi, Rabbi Needleman, Trina. And Trina, thank you. Hey, Gina Argento?
Yes.
Vladimir Bakowaski? Lisa Vermonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Wazites? Eric Wazites? Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Yes, Sonia.
Thank you. Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Cabon? Steve Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chinchelli? Teresa Sensato? Stephen, Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni Di Amato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibranowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Fain? Julia Amanda Foster? Cristo Garcia?
Yes.
Joe Ghosting?
Yes.
Joe Gross?
Yes.
David Helmick?
Yes.
Sabrina, Sabrina Help? Katie, Danny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky? Bozina? Corey Canton?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Kiltaborn?
Yes.
You, William Claswell?
Yes.
Thank you. Yolando? Liaison? Marie?
Is that Marie Lianza?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Marie Lianza? Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
Yolo? Trina McKever?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Santi Macheli?
Yes.
Thank you. Toby Markowitz? Toby? Rabbi David Needleman?
Yes.
Karen Nieves? Karen Nieves? Maria Dahmeric?
Yes.
Thank you. Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable?
Yes.
Okay. Isaac Sofer? Del T?
Yes.
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera? Simon Weiser? Twenty-nine yeses, zero no, zero abstentions, zero recusal, motion carries.
Okay, thanks, um, have a couple more items. Uh, this one is related to the New Heart, uh, development site, you know, it's in northern Greenpoint, um, bordering Franklin Street, Clay, and DuPont, it's very, you know, large parcel. And over, about 10 years ago, it was discovered that there were two large, um, chemical plumes underground as, that it was a, a plastic and vinyl factory from roughly 1994 to 2005. Um, since the bill, since it closed, the ownership has changed a few hands, hands a few times, entered bankruptcy, and the most recent developer under, overseen by Madison Realty Capital, which has found out, finally, um, officially acquired the, uh, the property, even though they've been doing work on it for a while. And the, um, Department of Environmental Conservation is about to sign off on the consent order, so make everything official. Um, but the, it kind of reached a milestone in that the, the site is split up into two sections, the east side is a brownfield cleanup program, and the western site where the two plumes are, is the superfund site. Demolition has been ongoing. Um, the eastern site surface structures were, uh, were demolished, um, finished about a month ago, and as of a few days ago, on the, uh, superfund side where all the, you know, the heavy, um, infrastructure was, it's 95% down. So essentially, they're just, the slabs are left. So the, they're ready to commence with, um, the physical, what they call the remedial action work plan, to physically start, um, putting in place what's needed to remediate, um, you know, both sites. And, um, the, um, but they're going to move on the eastern site first by, um, but also in conjunction with the west site, in that they, you know, they don't, they want to, during this whole process, they want to prevent any migration of the two plumes, which is basically phthalates on the, basically southwestern corner, corner, and, um, tricoral ethene, which is a, you know, a volatile organic compound that's, um, um, you know, is carcinogenic if, um, so they are going to install barriers around the entire eastern portion, including dividing it from the, uh, the western portion with sheet piles, and then, um, a soil mix wall along the eastern border, um, with the properties next to it. And it's all in a low vibrational type of, um, installation to prevent migration. And then on the superfund site, they're going to install, um, sheet piles, also prevent migration, and they're trying to get consent to go to the Greenpoint Landing property, diagonally across the street on the corner of, um, DuPont and Franklin, where the school was really intended to go, to just absolutely make sure there's no migration onto that property, though they have not detected any as, as of, um, as of yet, and they're constantly monitoring that. Um, and then as far as remediation goes, they're going to remove a tremendous amount of soil from the eastern site to the tune of about a hundred truckloads a day for six to seven months. Um, they're going to do some de-watering, and, um, it'll be involving, um, you know, injecting a compound to basically to, you know, um, mitigate, you know, residual contamination on the eastern site, and they're going to do that to, you know, a great extent, um, along with, um, extraction through, through wells and et cetera from the superfund section. The superfund section, the, um, you know, they decide, they have a rec, you know, they have a record of decision in terms of which remedy they're going to do, but in terms of physically designing that process, that's almost done. Um, you know, they are, the Norfolk neighbors, um, got a, a technical advise, uh, assistant grant to hire consultants to help advise both DEC and the community on, um, the whole process, and they've had some feedback on this alternative method of injecting a, um, a, a compound into the, um, contaminated areas that cannot be, you know, have the product fully extracted from them. So, um, we, we're, our plan is to invite Norfolk neighbors in to, um, update on that. Um, and so the, um, also, in the process of this whole remediation, a ventilation tent will be constructed, and the, the operation will occur within that, there'll be, it's a negative pressure system, so air is kept into the, confined into the tent, and then there, you know, there's carbon filters when there is some, um, you know, air released, uh, to, to protect the, the public and, uh, you know, from potential not, uh, toxic, um, emissions. Um, and they will be moving this tent as, you know, the work progresses from different parts of the site. Um, and, um, you know, the, you know, you, there's, there is a great detail, um, in the report that you can read, the presentation files from, uh, both the, um, Department of Environmental Conservation and, um, the developers is included, and there are, um, reference numbers that you can go in the DEC database, you know, to look at the detailed documents. Um, the, um, you know, in our discussion, there was just a worry, you know, just the worry, you know, about, um, public safety, you know, regarding, you know, what's happening here. Um, you know, just we wondered, is there a way they can reduce the amount of trucks going in and out, you know, and just the route that they're taking, making sure they're staying along, um, necessary truck routes? Um, in terms of if people notice, you know, strange odors, we asked them, what, what do phthalates smell like? What does DEC smell like? They said, anything smells strange, contact the agencies. Um, you can get, you know, contact the board, I think we need to touch with DEC or the Snirg State Department of Health, which was on the, uh, you know, attended the meeting and was involved in the discussion. Um, inevitably, there will be almost 500 units of, apartment units here, about 30% will be affordable, and this, um, you know, horrible, challenging situation has been the neighborhood for a long time, hopefully be behind us, but, you know, people are very worried about getting through it. You know, Laura Hoffman, who's been a longtime community member who lives right near the, um, where the former factory was, experienced, you know, um, you know, uh, um, you know, physical challenges, autoimmune, um, issues with herself and family members in the area, so she's really worried about what's going on there, very worried about the Greenpoint Playground, which is across the street, which, um, experiences severe ponding dirt, uh, during, uh, cloud burst events, really wondering, you know, just if that water's being affected by the contamination, though DEC in the past has said that, you know, the, you know, the storm sewers and, you know, just, you know, drinking water that's going through conduit that is, you know, completely separate from groundwater, so there really shouldn't be any ra, interaction there. Um, they said there isn't any reaction. Um, but, you know, just really, really worried about those things. Um, they'll be removing, there are underground storage tanks that have been removed, uh, petroleum is a major, um, contaminant there that they'll also be removing. Um, and essentially, we didn't take a vote on it, we just, you know, just, I wanted to convey what happened in the meeting. We urged them to come in because they had a meeting, um, about a month ago at the DuPont Senior Center, the same night as our last full board meeting, so the community board wasn't able to interact with, um, the parties involved here, so we were grateful that they were able to come in. Um, just wondering if anyone had any questions about, about New Heart? Um, they're, you know, they're, they're gonna, they're going to, you know, start installing the, um, the barrier walls, um, you know, at the beginning of the year. They're, they're doing the, they're gonna do the initial work over the next couple months and then really get into it, and the whole remediation process will probably take between 12 and 16 months to, uh, to complete, so if in two years, um, bring you through that phase, but then have to deal with the construction phase, so, you know, very large building with almost 500 apartments. But did anybody have comments or questions about, um, the project?
I appreciate your report, very clear and helpful.
But, um, glad to hear that, Jan, I'm glad to, you know, to, you know, it's very important that we be there for the, for the community on this. Um, and then mov- moving on, we, um, in our previous meeting, uh, we talked about, you know, this flooding during rain events in the neighborhood, um, especially in, uh, north, would be the, you know, east, eastern Greenpoint, over Nassau, Norman, over there, and Broadway, near Broadway Stages facilities, um, the problem of clog catch basins and lack of catch basins, so there is movement, you know, Erica and Evelyn Maticek, who are longtime residents, are working with DEP to try and get some action over there, but I feel like the board could, um, could help, be helpful here, especially on areas where there aren't catch basins, so we're gonna look to get DEP into a future meeting to discuss these issues, which are also related to climate. Um, a co, you know, a few meetings ago, National Grid came in with, to talk about their fossil fuel initiative, which includes using, you know, reusing, um, um, natural gas through, um, that is repurposed, and the Newtown Creek wastewater treatment plant, through, you know, uh, removal, you know, solid waste from wastewater, um, is, the byproduct is natural gas, and the idea was National Grid was supposed to tap in and bring that gas into their system for customers, and they've been putting off, putting off, and we sent them a letter, they responded last month that it's online, so we're very happy to hear that, but people wondering, oh, well, how's it going? What's the data like? How much, you know, how much, um, what kind of volume are they, uh, putting into the system? Um, so we, um, took a, we made a consensus recommend, uh, vote to, um, um, to, you know, request the board, send a letter to National Grid asking for the information. Um, but I thought I would combine it with another action that we need after that. Um, with the, um, you know, I'm a member of the Newtown Creek Community Advisory Group, which is dealing with, you know, you know, with some major issues with Newtown Creek, one of them being, uh, that it's, you know, it's a national, it's a federal superfund site, and the Environmental Protection Agency has just been going through this long drawn-out process of doing an investigation, and they've been working on a feasibility study, just understanding the risk involved, um, with the contaminants, what, you know, potential, getting towards a proposal for cleaning it up. It was just really announced that there's going to be an extensive delay in that process to the tune of like over 10 years. And so, um, you know, the CAG is really pushing back on that, and they're going to come back with, um, answers to questions and suggestions from them, but I thought, you know, that, I don't know when, or if, the board has ever had a direct report on the, the, the status of the Superson site, so we want to invite the EPA to come into the full board to, um, to update them on everything if possible. So we took a vote on that, uh, a consensus vote that was unanimous to prove that, so, um, I would, uh, you know, if, if it's okay with, uh, with, uh, the chair, I'd like to come, you know, call for a motion to, um, request National Grid provide data to the board, uh, with details on their biogas program from the Newtown Creek, uh, wastewater treatment plant, and to invite the Environmental Protection Agency to come in to update the board at a full board meeting. Um, I guess I ask you, um, Madam Chair, you think it's necessary for us to take a vote on that, or if our committee just recommends that the executive committee and, um, you consider, um, inviting them, including them on a future, uh, board meeting agenda for, for hearing?
Yeah, well, what, what you can do, actually, uh, send a, a, agenda, send a, send us a, that, they, send us an email that they want to be on our agenda when they can come.
Okay, so just go through the normal channels when we try and bring, okay, so we'll include that in the, uh, in the motion. Um, so, but I do need a vote on requesting National Grid provide us with data on the biogas program.
Sonia Iglesias, I make a motion.
I second it. So Sonia and Jan, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento? Gina Argento?
Yes, yes, this is Gina Argento, yes.
Thank you. Badi Bakawaski? Lisa Bonmonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Wazides?
Yes.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Capernegro?
Yes.
Frank Kabone? Frank Kabone? Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chincelli? Teresa Sincero? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni Di Amato?
Yes.
Drinkwater? Arthur Divanovsky?
Yes.
Lloyd Fain? Julia Amanda Foster? Cristo Garcia?
Yes.
Joe Goldstein?
Yes.
Joe Gross?
Yes.
David Helmick?
Yes.
Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky? Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kilterborn?
Yes.
William Claswell? William Claswell? Yolando? Marie? Liza? Marie?
Marie who?
Marie you?
Oh, yes, 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 Lienza.
Lienza, thank you. Sorry, I'm trying. Yolo? Trina McKeeber?
Yes.
Adam Myers?
Yes.
Dante Machelli? Dante? Toby Markowitz?
Dante, yes.
Okay, Toby? Rabbi David Needleman?
Yes.
Karen Neves? Maria Dahmerik?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sables?
Yes.
Thank you. Isaac Sofa? Delty?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera? Maria Viera? Simon Weiser? Twenty-nine yeses, zero no, zero abstentions, and zero recusal, motion carries. Twenty-nine yeses, zero no, zero abstentions, and zero recusal, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Um, just one, I'll just, announcement that, um, we're, be scheduling our next meeting on November 29th, we're inviting the US Army Corps of Engineers to come in. They have a proposal for to build this massive coastal resiliency, um, infrastructure throughout New York Harbor area, including the mouth of Newtown Creek, where they are proposing building these storm surge gates, levees, floodwalls, natural defenses, which potentially, you know, will affect the shorelines around Newtown Creek and East River, affecting building residences, businesses, and the parks, like Newtown Barge Park and Transmitter Park, um, because it might, it potentially create, um, kind of collateral flooding, in the name of helping with calming storm surges, et cetera. It might create some kind of, kind of what they call induced flooding, so we're going to bring them in to get the details and to talk about it, so stay tuned for a notice on that. And that's it, thank, thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, can we take a vote on the calendar? Can I get the, a motion to, uh, to vote on the calendar with the necessary corrections?
Motion, motion to, motion to vote, for the vote on the calendar.
Second, Joe Gross.
Rabbi Needleman, Joe Gross, vote on the 2020, 2023, 24 calendar with the necessary corrections that was discussed previously. Roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento? Gina Argento? Badi Bakawaski? Lisa Bonmonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Wazides?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Iris?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Phil Capone Negro.
Yes.
Frank Cabon. Steven Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chantelli, Teresa Sincero, Stephanie Cuevas, Ronan Daly. Giovanni Di Amato.
Yes.
You, Eric Drinkwater, Drinkwater. Arthur Di Bonavski.
Yes.
Lloyd Fing, Juliana Foster, Cristo Garcia.
Yes.
You, Joe Goldstein.
Yes.
Joe Gross.
Yes.
David Helmick.
Yes.
Sabrina Help. Katie, Danny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky. Corey Canton.
Yes.
Paul Kultuborn.
Yes.
William Claswell. William Claswell. Yolando. Marie Liza.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yolo. William McKeever.
Yes.
Thank you. Adam Myers.
Yes.
Dante Machelli. Dante. Toby Moskowitz. Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Thank you. Karen Nieves. Maria Dahmerick.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson.
Yes.
Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer. Del T.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Mariviera. Simon Weiser. Twenty five, yes, civil no, civil abstention, civil recusal. Madam Chair, motion carries.
Thank you, Sonia. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is Parks Department. Minute as written. Next item is elected officials announcements. Abraham Nugo. Councilmember Gutierrez, Jennifer Gutierrez office.
Yes, President. Thank you so much for having me, CB1. I've. Actually attended the last few meetings, but I've never spoken on behalf of the council members, so it's nice to see all of you face to face. So just the updates that we wanted to give really quickly. Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez enjoyed Halloween with the community. We gave out candies to children. So thank you to everybody who stopped by the Moore Street Market to receive candy and all volunteers. Also, thank you to everybody who donated clothes for our winter clothing drive. For the new arriving migrants. The event was a success and we helped many families. So. That was really, really nice. To be able to do, but an update from that is that we got a lot of donations, which is great, but it meant that we had. Many leftovers, so we will be hosting another distribution event soon. The details are to be determined, but I will relay as soon as plans are solidified. We also have the trash force that our office began for. Community wide cleanups. That is active, so we encourage everybody to please submit 311 complaints and then contact our office. With those 311 complaint numbers, so we are aware of them. Thank you as well to everybody who submitted ideas for participatory budgeting. The last day to submit. Was on the 31st of October, but if you check the website, I just checked it just now. If you still have an idea and want to go online, you can go ahead on that website. And still submit online, but. For our district, we got a total of 98 ideas. So thank you to everybody who submitted. We also are hosting a community cleanup soon. We're going to be meeting at the Ridgewood Farmers Market at Myrtle Avenue. And then clean the street nearby, so please. Bring your food scraps as well. The cleanup will be at 1:00 PM. If you need details, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. And also, we will be hosting our first of several town halls. Across every neighborhood in our district. First one is going to be December 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And it's going to take place at St. Paul's Evangelical Lutheran Church. And the focus of this first town hall is going to be a South Side Safety and Sanitation Concerns. So if you have concerns. Want to connect, connect directly with the council member and our team. Please, please, please feel free to reach out. Once we have a flyer with everybody that will be attending Solidified. We will roll that out and share it widely. But that is all from our office as always. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact me. And feel free to just contact our general office number, which is 718-963-3141. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Abraham. Next is Stacy Johnson from Senator Kavanaugh's office. Stacy Johnson. Next is Daniel Bruno from Borough President Reynoso's office. Daniel Bruno. Next is Andrew Epstein from Assemblywoman Emily Gallagher's office. Okay, here in none, that completes that. Okay.
Madam Chair, there's Stacy Johnson.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was having trouble being able to unmute and make my video show up. But yeah, I'm here from Senator Kavanaugh's office. We have a couple more months representing Brooklyn and then soon afterwards, we will not be representing Brooklyn. So I invite everyone to get in touch. With me, especially if there are any projects that have been recently. Covered by our office or even in the past, because we don't want anything to fall through the cracks. So I will put my info in the chat in just a second. Just letting you know some events that are coming up that I'm participating in, including events that you guys are hosting. So tomorrow. The DOT is hosting tomorrow an event for the BQE North, the workshop. At 6:30 at MS 126 at 424 Leonard Street. So. We will be engaging in that as well as a lot of you, I'm sure. And next Tuesday, I will be. Paying attention to your Transportation Committee meeting because it will be discussing the Berry Street Open Street Design. Just letting you know that we are paying attention to that issue as we get a lot of emails about that particular open street design. And also. Next Wednesday, we're hosting a flu shot event in Manhattan, but it's at Melzer Tower. If you know anyone in Lower Manhattan that wants to get a flu shot or a COVID booster. Let us know. We're also happy to help you guys sponsor your own flu shot events if that's something you're interested in doing. And then just letting you know that. We're paying close attention to different issues with basements flooding from storm water. Overflow during flash flood events. So if that happens. In your area or in your house. Unfortunately, I hope that doesn't happen, but if it does, let us know. We're just trying to keep tabs on. When and how often that's happening across the city. Because as you probably know, Senator Kavanaugh is really eager to get basement apartments legalized. And one part of that is to make sure that they're safe and flooding is obviously not safe. So we're paying close attention to that and Shahanah Hanif's office in South Brooklyn is having. A town hall on the issue next Thursday at 6:00 PM. And then just letting you know that Senator Kavanaugh is not here tonight. He is in Puerto Rico for the Somos Conference. That is, you know. Centering the Latino community and issues about Puerto Rico. So just those updates and I put my stuff in the chat, my information. Thank you.
Stacy, our chat is not on, so would you email, would you email the information to our office and any flyers about your events?
Yes, I will send it all to you. And you can also just, if you, anybody goes to the website, to the Brian Kavanaugh, you know, state senate website. If you just email the. General inbox, I check that. So I got you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Sure.
Is Daniel Bruno here? Andrew Epstein? Yes, not. Okay. Next item is old business.
I believe Bruno Daniel is here. It looks like he's unmuted himself. I'm not sure if he's going to speak.
Bruno?
He's unmuted. I just.
Apparently his audio is not working.
That way. Okay. Is Andrew Epstein on? Okay, moving on. Is there any old business?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, well, I don't know if it's really old or new, but I was just the. Running District Manager. Position. The. Job description that came through. Looked great. I just want to say it's really great to see that document. Is it, I just question, has it been? Released and posted or is it a working document or?
No, we sent it to the full board in case they wanted to add anything or get their approval. You know, if anybody got anything they want to add or whatever, we sent it to the to the board so they could look at it so we can move on. So we haven't gotten anything yet as of now.
Okay, just submit. Just submit directly to the the board.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been posted yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we said, we had, we sent it to the board, but it hasn't been posted. So Simon, Simon is away and we have to have another meeting because we have to. Figure out where we're going to post it and how we're going to post it.
Okay. And. I had one suggestion, if this is the place, but just. Having expert. Knowledge of parliamentary procedure. Be in the. The recommended area and not the. Because, you know, we need, we need, you know, Jerry. Jerry was our parliamentarian. Think we would need potentially the new person to. Fill that role or have someone else fill it, but.
Send, send your comments to the to the committee.
Okay.
Anybody got in the comments, send it to the committee and.
What are, how does this work? So right now it's been distributed to the whole board. And what are the next steps?
The next step is to get it back and go over it. And if there's any additions or anything need to be changed. Then we'll look at it. The next, and then we got, we got to. Send it to decast to make sure that we're in their hiring guidelines to make sure that we're not saying or asking anything that they disagree with. And then we'll post it.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Sonia.
Yeah.
After we review, we look it over and people just put their comments or whatever addition. Does it have to be voted on or is it just goes through once the?
Well, once the committee decides that they want to make the changes, then they make the changes.
Okay, so there's not going to be an item to vote it.
Board, we're giving board members an opportunity to look at it. And see if, you know, if they want to add anything or delete anything. We're being open and transparent.
I know, I know, but. Just saying as far as adopting it, is there any policy or procedures that require us to to say yes, we go with it or? I'm just saying for procedural purposes.
Well, I'm, I'm going to send it to decast and have decast to look at it and make sure that we're in, we're in the right range of their hiring policy.
And then once people, once you have candidates, how, what, just in terms of the timeline in general, what?
Well, the thing is, we're going to get the comments back from the board. The committee will look at the comments. They either add them or, no, the committee accept the comments when we, they vote to add them in. Then we send it to decast and see if we need, if we got everything in order. And that we're within their hiring guidelines. And then we will post it. Once we post it, then people can start applying. And once the applications come in, the executive board will look at, do the interviews. They have to set up interviews. It's a long process of a series one.
How will the? The selection process work in terms of like narrowing down candidates and then inevitably making decision? How how will that? Like how will the interview, with the committee? Engage in the physical interviews, initial ones, and then? Will they have like final candidates, like a few final candidates that potentially would go to a next level and then? How would the decision ever would be made?
But my experience, we would, we would make a, we would interview the candidates and come back with our recommendations and get the board to vote on. And then we will hire. Where the board votes for.
And it's not the committee, it's the executive board that that does this, right?
The executive board does the interviews. There are more questions on that?
Yeah, is there's any update on the? Personnel budget? For, you know, this, the coming, this fiscal year and then beyond?
What do you mean?
Well, it was an issue of not having funds available to fill a position. For the rest of the year and then there was. A proposal to advance funds from a future budget into the current year.
Well, like I said, OMB went above and beyond because they knew that this was an unprecedented situation. So they got us money from the 2324 budget. So we could hire somebody.
That's great news.
Yeah, it took some doing, but they finally got it together after I told them what dire, dire need we were in. So they've, they've done everything they could to try to, you know, expedite this.
And in terms of the timeline, once it's posted, how long do you anticipate before you start interviewing? How long of a period, how long do you keep the application open?
Well, I would imagine once we get our applications in, we'll start the interviewing process. And then if they interview and they decide that, you know, we have the candidates we want. You know, you can't possibly, you know, you can't, you know. I don't know if the committee going to cut off a certain amount or whatever. But I'm sure, you know, the applications come in, they'll look at them and they'll do interviews.
Thank you.
Of course, the committee has to come up with a plan for that, how they have to handle it. Or how they want to handle it. Any more questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a question. In the past, as I was a part of the board, did the district manager, I know some of you knew him. For, you know, 30 years and more than that. Did the district manager from our board attended and represented the board in public hearing from city planning or. Landmarks and and including the New York State Legal Authority. Because of what I heard from in other community board, the district manager also has this responsibility, including attending. I don't know, controversial legal license, attending the 504 hearing with tremendous positive impact the moment. The district manager represent the community publicly there. Just curiosity, this could be included? I will put it as one of my input, but I was curious if our district manager ever did it in the past decades he was serving.
You know, all the boards basically work differently. And there's no set guidelines. Every board seems to operate differently. But I'm sure, you know, our district manager was where he was supposed to be. And I'm sure, you know, when the notices went out about hearings. John or the chair or somebody from that committee tried to go, they had to be there, they went. But you can't expect a district manager to be everywhere and run the board to day day operations. Any more questions? Okay, here in nothing, is there any new business? Here in none. I'd like to wish everybody a healthy, happy Thanksgiving and enjoy yourself and spend quality time with your family. Be safe, be healthy. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Would you make a motion to adjourn?
Second by David Needleman.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Good night.